Okay.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Through the agenda, there is a modification added to the agenda and it'll be on number eight. And we're gonna need a motion for the sealed bidding, coding bids to open on April 2nd, 2018 at 6:30 PM. That would be the change on the agenda.
So that's D? D?
Uh, yes. Between A and B.
And you said 6:30?
Uh, yes.
What date, Tom?
On April 2nd, 2018 at 6:30.
I would make the motion to approve the agenda with the addition of eight Ds, adding a motion for sealed bids to open April 2nd at 6:30 PM.
I will second Julie's motion to approve the agenda with that addendum, eight D.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote. Motion carried. Through the minutes of the February...
I make the motion to approve the minutes of the February meeting.
There are some changes that need to be made.
Is it the date? Is that what it is?
It says in the minutes that the meeting is Monday, February 4th. It was not. It was the 5th. I saw that in the newspaper. I wondered about that.
So in the motion, you want me to change the date? How do we do that, then?
Yes. You'll, yeah. Approve the minutes with the change, uh, the publication change date of February 4th to February 5th.
Okay. I make the motion to approve the minutes, but to change the public notice from April 4th to April 5th.
Fifty-one.
That really is...
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote. Motion carried. Public input.
I do, I have. Um, on that same sheet, um, we've, you declared the Alcestery Union Hudsonite as your official paper. Note the date on that paper. Um, that date on that paper, when you have a resolution or an ordinance that you published, the masthead date is the one that, that they may go by. And that's gonna cost you time in respect with a referral. So, that lands on your publisher's feet, um, but the masthead date says the 18th. It was not the 18th. And this, our, this newspaper has had a history of publishing wrong dates on the inside pages, but this one went all the way through. So I'm just letting you know, as far as your legal stuff, you need to make sure that that date is accurate. And the other thing is, when you publish minutes that are, have not been approved by the council, you need to specifically say, state in that publication that those are unapproved minutes. Otherwise, folks in town don't realize there's a difference between approved and unapproved minutes. And how they operate, it's gonna be dictated on what that says. So when you publish something that the council has not approved, you need to put that, you need to put that notice in there, unapproved minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question concerning that. If Thursday, February 18th is not a day that is possible in the calendar, what do we need to do to, is that, do we just assume that that's a mistake in, in our resolution?
I think it would be wise for us to go back to the Alcestery Union Hudsonite and say, please, publish a correction to your, to this paper, because it should say, it should be noted that this volume, 131, issue number seven, had an incorrect date of Thursday, February 18th. That's an incorrect date. There is no such thing as Thursday, February 18th. Please change that and make it noted in your paper. Can we approach them ASAP? About that, please? I think, I think he needs to make it right. Yeah, he should, he should make a change. Make a note on the next publication that he brings out, stating that.
And I would suggest you maybe want to check with council to see if that would affect the 20-day, the 20 days they have to refer that.
I have to assume that they will look at it as a misprint. The, the paper came out on the appropriate date. The only thing is, it was written such that it was the wrong date. So, um, I have to assume that the date of the paper, when it was actually made available to the public, would still be a legitimate date, starting that clock. However, his, his republishing, you know, correction, if you will, I think will put a nail in that. So I think that's important. But I think that's not a bad idea, to at least touch base with our lawyer and say, okay, we just wanna make sure we're not doing something incorrectly here.
So maybe we don't have a lawyer tonight?
Correct. Okay. We'll contact the attorney and we will also contact the publisher and get a change made on it. Okay. Road safety improved and approved. Is there more public input?
Do you have more? Do you have public input? Okay.
Just wanted to give you an opportunity. Okay. Sorry about that. Road Safety Improvement Project, discussion?
This was something that an earlier council, um, I'm not sure how many years ago, I wanna say this, maybe about four years ago, uh, we were approached with, um, how the county and the state was going to put all new signs, all new signs up. And at that time, the council made the decision to not proceed with that. Because at the time, I believe the reason was, they felt there's a line in this contract that says, if something happens to the sign or the pole, that it needs to be replaced at the city's expense. Well, there were very few communities that did not take advantage of that. We were one of them. And when Lonnie did some research to find out what it was going to cost to get our signs up to code, it was very, very expensive. And so he put some words out to people and it has finally come around that there's a project happening in Mitchell and they feel it's close enough that we can be included in that. So, this is actually like about a $30,000 to $50,000 gift. So I hope this time that we will, um, proceed with this. But, this is the agreement. I included the email that James sent down. And this is the agreement that the, uh, the city would need to approve. And we can call him and he can ask any questions. Um, and also, he will provide, um, an answer to four B, as far as which option we should choose. So, if you would like, I will get him on the phone. Or if you want to discuss.
So, they will dictate which one of those five methods?
No, but they'll offer explanation.
And, and then we have the option to choose?
That is correct.
Doesn't it make sense that a blanket replacement method takes care of all of it? Or maybe that's a good question for, okay, understood. To me...
Lonnie, which of these sections under the city responsibility part B, do you think would be best for us?
I know that much about it. I was gonna, I guess we, I probably could've called the county and seen what method they use in the township. I'm guessing they're using the headlight reflectivity at night method. But, uh, I know those, those meters that you go up to them with or shine at them are pretty spendy units. So... I, I prob, I agree with Dan in the blanket case, but I'm thinking they're meaning just to put a new cover over it? Is that what they mean? That's something we're gonna have to ask him.
That is correct, yeah.
But before we even know if we should even do that, we're still gonna need to be able to figure out, does it need to be done? So... It's something we shouldn't have to worry about, I think. What are they, five years? Something like that? And it's only the ones that are direct sunlight that are gonna fade quicker, so... But he, that guy will be able to answer that way better than I will, so...
I think it would be wise to hear what he's got to say.
Yeah.
Ask him some questions.
Is this like all the speed signs or what?
These are everything.
Every sign.
Every stop sign. You know how they did it all out in the county? Replace them with their larger print sign?
And then all on a different pole that can be...
Yeah, I have it on our computer.
Eventually, we're probably gonna have to have this done. And if we don't do this now...
Then we're gonna have to pay...
This is gonna be hard.
Yeah. And right now, the state will pay 100% of the, of the cost for the project.
What's the deadline on...
Hi, James, this is Pat calling with the city Alcestery. How are you? I am good. I am meeting with my council and, um, I believe they will have some questions for you, so if that's acceptable, I'll put you on speaker. Okay? That is correct? That's okay. Okay, no problem. I will put you on speaker and, um, and I will let them ask some questions. And then we will prompt you for the five different options and you can tell us, um, a definition of those. All right. All right, this is James.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening, all.
Uh, well, I'll just start a little bit here. Um, my name is James Ainsley. I'm an engineer with the South Dakota Department of Transportation. And the project that, uh, you have before you for consideration is to provide signing throughout the city. Uh, that's every road that you claim within your boundaries. We would be hiring a consultant engineer who would drive every road multiple times to evaluate the signs that you have and their current condition, as well as what they're mounted on. And, uh, evaluate beyond their condition, also the signs that you might need. And then the project would also involve the purchase and installation, um, through competitive bid for another, uh, construction firm to install those signs. So, once that project is done, the city should be 100% compliant with everything that's expected in terms of signing throughout the city. Uh, includes not only stop signs, uh, school zones, things like that, but, uh, your street name signs and pretty much everything that's covered in the MUTCD. And, uh, so, I guess with that, that's very brief. Um, I'd be happy to, uh, address any questions you might have.
And James said he does not have the documented version because of the state being closed today, so if you could prompt him for the five, uh, options, then he will give an explanation.
James, this is David Larson, councilperson. Uh, under city responsibility, we have five options. It says the city will use the following methods for maintaining sign retro reflectivity in conformance with the MUTCD. Which would be the best option for those, of those to use for our city?
Well, um, that's kind of a tough question for me to tell you what's best. I, um, I'd be happy to give you a, a description of each and then it would really be incumbent upon you guys and probably speaking with your, uh, street crews on what they think would, would work best for you.
Thank you.
Briefly, um, and like I said, I apologize, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, uh, the first one, I believe, is a nighttime visual inspection.
Correct.
Yes.
And that one is, you would need to select, uh, probably a couple people. They can receive free training from the South Dakota Local Transportation Assistance Program run out of Brookings, uh, the university there. And they will come, they will teach your people how to do the evaluation. And, uh, probably once a year, they'll drive, drive around, take a look at your signs at night. And if they can read them, they're good. And if they're starting to fade, it's time to replace them. Uh, the second one, and like I say, I apologize, but essentially it's a retro reflectivity meter, I believe.
Right. Measured, yep.
That one, uh, it's basically the same thing. You have someone drive around at night, but the city would be responsible to purchase the meter, which is about $20,000. Um, so that's not a popular choice, but just as valid. And like I say, it's just a meter as opposed to someone's, uh, judgment, uh, used in their eyes driving around. The other three are just basically variances of the same thing. And I apologize, I'm not gonna get the order correct. Um, but there's like, uh...
Expected sign life.
I'm sorry.
Expected sign life method?
Okay. That, thank you, I appreciate the help, I apologize. Um, that one, essentially the city would just adopt a measure of, say, in 10 years, we're gonna replace the signs, irregardless of condition. It's a conservative approach, that's why it's approved. These signs are, uh, they're advertised to last 18 years. I wouldn't shoot for 18 if you choose that method, I would go with maybe 15 or, or, or less. But that's, that's an acceptable procedure. Um, if you wouldn't mind, I, like I said, I'm terribly sorry, but would you mind reading off the, the remaining two choices?
Blanket replacement method, controlled sign method.
Okay. Thank you very much. The blanket method is essentially, you're gonna choose blocks, you know, Fifth Street through First Street, we're gonna replace in the year 2025. And then on the other side of town, you're gonna replace, you know, the other half is essentially what you're doing. You're just blocking off the city and replacing them in turn. Uh, once again, it's a conservative approach, that's why it's allowed. And the controlled sign is basically the same. You're gonna choose one stop sign in town, one street name sign, and they're gonna be representative for all the rest. Once that one is no longer in good condition, then you would choose to, well, not choose, but then that's, that's kind of the commitment that you're taking, is that once that one fails, you're considering all of them failed and all of them need to be replaced. By, by far, the visual nighttime inspection is the most popular. I'd say 95-plus percent of the other agencies are picking that one, but it's really up to you and your staff as to what you think would work best.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, it says check all that apply. Aside from spending $20,000 for a meter, if we check all four of the other ones, we've really covered ourselves. And basically, we're saying, it's almost like a life in period certain type insurance policy. I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with the life of this, but we're also gonna say, even if the life is 18 years, 10 years from now, we're gonna replace them all anyway.
And, and that's perfectly valid, that's why I say a, a conservative stopgap and that's why it's accepted. Um, and, and that's fine. It, it's just, uh, the potential is there that you would be replacing a sign when it still has a couple of years' life left in it. But if that's, uh, a, a choice you're willing to make, that's perfectly valid.
Okay, you guys got anything else for us?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, uh, for letting me attempt, I thought, uh, driving conditions would've been pretty bad today.
They're not good at all.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. If, uh, any other questions, uh, if you need to reconsider or table, I'd be happy to, uh, address anything else.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening.
You too.
Bye-bye.
I guess that would've been a good question. What is our timeline? When do we have to make a decision on this?
I would recommend making a decision soon. It may not happen in, um, you know, for a few years, 'cause like I said, it was four years ago or so when we talked about this the last time. But I don't want this to go away.
Yeah, absolutely.
It says it's for fiscal year 2019, that might start in July.
Well, there's a lot of engineering work that has to do.
Yeah.
Well, let's get on board, this isn't gonna cost us anything.
No.
If you do it now, right?
Exactly.
Other than, the replacement costs 10 to 15 to 18 years on the road.
Subject to that anyway, which we would've done, yeah. Exactly.
So why did we pass it to last one? Was it federal, last one was federal? Was it a federal grant where everybody got to do it?
It was, there, there, the line that was talked about was the fact that if something happens to the sign, then the city's responsible for fixing it, whether it's the sign or the post. But that's something we do anyway.
You have to do it anyway, so it would, like...
Yeah, that's correct, so... I, I think it was the language that maybe, um, made the council hesitate.
Well, it looks to me like the best option is the expected sign life method.
Is D?
Be the third one down on D.
I guess I, I was thinking...
Do you know you were on the first one?
I was thinking the visual nighttime inspection.
That's why I was saying as well.
If they look good, they are good, is what it...
If you can read them, the way it sounded, if you can read them, you just have to have somebody from Brookings come down and, and train.
But the training is no cost.
Free of charge.
Yeah. So I say that, that's my, I say the...
I don't see the point of replacing something if it doesn't sound...
It ain't broken completely.
Right.
Well, I'll stick my neck out. I will make the motion that we get on board with this sign replacement. We choose the visual nighttime inspection method. Okay. Okay, so Lance? And who's second?
My second.
Do we need to have part of the motion designate the mayor? And add his signers?
Yeah, that should be on here. We should have that in the motion, 'cause we'll have to sign it.
Excuse me?
As part of the... Okay, I, my motion will... Also, I will amend my motion and say that we have designated, or with my desire to designate Tom, the mayor, as the city's authorized representative. And we empower the mayor with his authority to sign this agreement on behalf of the city. Yeah, but Pat will have to sign it too. Yep. And also...
Finance officer.
Finance officer will also be authorized to sign. Am I clear as mud?
So, regarding, regarding the amendment to the motion on the floor, I second Lance's amendment to designate Mayor Glass and Finance Officer Jerns to be designated signers of said document.
Okay, but we already had a second on it.
No, 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 no. This is on the amendment.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the amendment. Is there any further discussion?
We didn't vote on the original motion, did we?
Can't yet.
Can't yet, okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I vote.
Well, you're actually, you're actually just voting on the amendment right now, but...
Right.
Okay, motion carried.
Now you have to do one more vote.
On the original motion?
On the original motion, with the amendment.
With the amendment. That I seconded. Is that where we're at now?
That's correct. So we need a vote on that now. Okay. How do we do that though? 'Cause we're not really voting it. I could just say I called a previous question. We now have to vote on that motion.
As amended.
As amended, yes, correct. Okay. All right. Then we need a motion.
Nope. We are down.
We need a motion.
Just need a vote. All pro-votes. Just need a vote.
We, okay, we need a vote. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I vote. Motion carried. Oh, it is in the motion. Everybody agreed.
Yes.
Yeah, it was. It is a motion.
It is a motion.
Got me confused.
Now we're good.
Okay. Lawyers, we're good, that's cool. Planning and zoning commission. Discuss 2018 zoning regulations. Motion to set April 2nd, 2015 as planning commission public hearing.
Um, Patrick emailed out the revised zoning regulations. And the procedure is a little bit different than how you do it for, uh, an ordinance. Typically, with an ordinance, they would have the committee look at this and make sure all the changes and everything is accurate. And with the planning and zoning, um, the commission needs to be, uh, appointed tonight. And once the commission is appointed, then the commission will hold a hearing to approve the regulations. And, um, so tonight, what we need, the, the regulations are presented to you. This is your time to look through them. And at the public hearing, um, then any changes that you wanna make can be made. So tonight, the two things we need is we need to set the public hearing. So I'm recommending our next council meeting at 6:15. And also, the members of the city council will become the members of the planning commission. And so the mayor needs to appoint and you guys need to rat fire.
Okay, so first, we need a motion to set April 2nd at 6:15 PM for the planning and zoning public hearing.
I'll make a motion to set the planning commission public hearing for April 2nd, 6:15 PM in this room.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
As one of the people that was on the committee that helped with this, there are some changes in here.
That's, that's a very good point.
That's what I was...
Well, we can actually discuss that after vote, but, but I think it would be handy to have the original documentation.
Our ordinances are very old, they were from the 60s. Our ordinances are very old, they were from the sixties, I believe, so it's time to get them updated.
The only reason I say that, I mean typically, what I'll see in a lot of engineering documents is, the document comes to me in this form. There's a black bar down the side that says, verbiage in this section has been changed. Um, that would be nice, something...
This would be almost all black bar down the side.
That is correct.
Great, so basically, we should just read it and if we've got any questions or problems, we should come back. Exactly, we do that at the meeting.
All right, then, the zoning, the zoning districts have changed and some setbacks have changed and signage requirements have changed.
Right now is all we're doing is getting a motion to set April 2nd as the public hearing meeting.
Understood.
And we have a, is there any further discussion on that?
I was just going to comment that please read through this.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried, now we need a motion to appoint members of the city council as the planning commission members. And I would like to appoint all city council members as the commission members. And we would need a motion to do that.
I make a motion to allow the mayor to appoint the city council as a planning commission.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Okay, city employee, street department, Lonnie, the street update?
Uh, the street update part, about the only thing I have right now is the sweeper is here in the shop. And I'll get, we'll get trained on that here in a couple of weeks and, uh, hopefully the snow goes away and we can start using it, so.
The loader experienced some issues the last month, is that normal wear and tear?
Oh.
Hydraulics?
Um, we just dropped the oil again and changed filters to get it cleaned out, make sure it's good.
And we had a sticky cylinder, that cylinder?
Yes, uh, actually that turned out, our, our cylinder on our plow, the holding nut, whatever you call it on the piston in there, backed, backed itself off and so it lost the ability to rotate. But down there took it and had it rebuilt for us and it was good to go. Luckily, that was just a cylinder, not the loader issue, so. But while they're here, we had them do a full service on it, still on, it's break-in period on the engine, so it takes break-in oil still. And, uh, everything seems to be running good on it now, so.
Good.
Um, all right, going to be the patcher, um, we pulled that off of advertising, I don't remember when that was last, but, uh...
About July was the last time we advertised it.
So basically, that's just sitting up on our shop still, and I don't know, did you hear back anything from Tom on that?
Um, I heard back from Sam. Um, we have two options with our patcher. One of the options is to not reappraise and just take it to a surplus auction. Um, I don't know that we can get on like the one in Huron, but, uh, we possibly could get on with Sioux Falls, taking it to Sioux Falls on a surplus auction. Or the alternative is to reappraise, advertise it, and take this again. Or I guess the third option is just leave it in shop, but probably not, that's not much.
No.
You really don't wanna use it anymore, just not a satisfactory machine, is it?
No, it, it's good for little potholes, that's about it.
Remind me, when we posted it last, did we even have any interest in it really?
I got calls on it, but most of the calls, the people thought it was a asphalt patching machine, hot mix machine.
Like a paver.
Yes.
Yeah.
So... Cause there's no pictures or anything in the listing in the South Dakota Municipal League, so, I don't know. It was just the way it was worded, it came across as a paving machine, I guess, so. So once I explained what it was, they said they didn't want anything to do with it, so.
I, I think it makes sense to, and I don't, I guess it doesn't matter to me whether it's Huron or Sioux Falls, but I think just getting it to one of those surplus sites and just letting them have their way with it. I mean, huh, it's just taking up space right now, isn't it? If we're not gonna use it, let's give it...
I agree.
Yeah.
So then, do we have to declare that surplus property?
No, if we take it to...
We don't have to.
It was already there.
It was already what?
Um, would this be something to, to put on, uh, Rankin's?
Yeah, it could.
This wouldn't hurt, would it?
Well, you guys, they have a construction area and that auction time, so.
Give quite the exposure with that.
Yeah, it's pretty big.
But you can always put a reserve on it, I mean, although, what...
No, not really, not really.
Can?
You can buy it back yourself, you'll still pay your off, so, and they frown on that. Uh, but yeah, no, if you're gonna put it on, sell it.
Let it go.
Let it go.
Yeah.
Uh, I can contact Rankin if that's what people wanna do, otherwise, if you wanna go elsewhere with it.
Well, we've already met our legal obligation.
We tried. It didn't work, so. What do you guys think of the auction time thing, has that worked all right as far as you guys are concerned?
I don't think we've lost yet on that thing.
Should I contact Rankin?
Yeah.
I will do that. And it sets up at the shop?
Yeah, I'll have them bury it, so.
You'll get a...
Our skid, old skid steer gone, they were, they were supposed to come today, but I don't blame them for not coming.
You'll need pictures and then, you'll, I'll just have him contact you.
Yep, I will.
All right. Okay.
Um, I'm gonna see if we're done with B. Um, Patty knows more about this than I do.
Yeah.
We have a situation on Fourth Street, um, where you would turn to go to like Fourth and Union. Um, essentially, two neighbors weren't getting along. And because it's wintertime and there's snow along the curb, your vehicle is naturally a little bit further away from the curb than normal. And the two neighbors were feuding, and so they purposely parked directly across from each other. And, um, it caused, uh, the street to become very narrow. Uh, so much so that Lauren even questioned if there was something that we could do, Lauren Fisher. And since then, our police officer had both of the parties in this room and did a wonderful job diffusing the situation.
And they throw punches, I guess.
Down neither one of them park on the street. But that, um, brought up a question, on some of our narrower streets, should we allow or disallow parking only on one side?
We just declare, so I wonder if he answers that?
This would be your own. This would not just be in the wintertime, cause you're asking, I mean, Union, I was always...
So it's not just a problem with there's snow, it's a problem all the time?
It, it potentially gets narrower, yes, but it's magnified in the wintertime because you can't park as close to the curb as you normally would do.
And most people are easy enough to approach, if I, we see that when we drive around, we just ask them to move and they do. These two, for about a week, weren't quite as agreeable, but they've been better the last three weeks.
Has there been any other incidents of it happening, like with other people being difficult to move their cars, or?
No.
I don't know if it's worth changing just for a one-time incident.
That's my opinion too, I...
Yeah.
I mean, I'd say if it keeps happening, then yeah, we'll have to do something, but...
You know, I, I lived on Union Street for quite a while and I was always very cautious when I backed out of my driveway not to hit any of Derek and Melissa's vehicles. And even when I would go down a block south of there by Joe Constance, you know, he has a large truck and sometimes a trailer and, um, sometimes it does get skinny through there, but if you just drive slower, you're fine, so.
What, does the garbage, does he ever go anywhere else?
No, that was just when those two were feuding.
Okay.
He's never said anything else to me other than that.
Yeah, I guess it would be my opinion just to address it on a case-by-case basis, it starts happening a lot, then maybe.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Thanks, thanks to the chief for taking care of that.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, can I backtrack just a little bit?
Rest.
Line up.
Mr. Mayor?
Can I backtrack just a little bit, um, is it all right? There's a, got a Facebook page for the street department now, and our shoulders are real soft. And I'm afraid that truck is gonna kill us this year. So is it all right if I request people to maybe slide their garbage cans out a little more? I don't know if there's a insurance thing or... Or do something to help?
Ours is already up, come up.
Yeah, all it takes is a pickup right now, so. Like when we plow tomorrow, uh, Dale will probably stay in the center and I'll go to the head of the loader. The wider tires don't seem to affect it as much, so. But, uh, I, I was just hoping maybe, or at least ask them to get it in the gutter for, through the wet part here.
Yeah.
Cause it could be six foot reach if I'm not mistaken, so.
So you're saying they're too far out into the street?
No, I'm hoping they can, can bring them out farther, so that he stays off of that three to four foot from the gutter.
Some people just leave it sitting up on, on their boulevard area, rather than put it down on the street, and I think that's the answer.
Which is actually what I do, but now I'll be moving it out.
And I never have, I've always put it in the curb and gutter area, I mean it...
Well, we'll probably have a fun time tomorrow, it's snowing a little, on garbage cans, but... Slow down and hopefully...
Lane was in this afternoon and I asked him if he was gonna do anything different as far as when he's coming out. And it's their plan to come out at normal time, so. Garbage might be done by the time you guys start following.
I'm hoping it is because this heavy wet stuff will knock the cans over.
Boy, interstate's closed right now, so hopefully they open up before then.
Except for Melissa.
But is it, would it be all right if I requested that at least?
At least it would increase the coverage.
So you're saying, you're asking for permission just to mention it on the Facebook page?
Basically, yeah, I don't wanna say that, I don't wanna ask people to do something that we shouldn't be asking them to do.
Right, I, I think that's legitimate, it's gonna save our streets.
But do we need, do we need to go further and maybe put an ad in the paper? You know, those three or four hundred people that get the paper, at least, no?
Well, that's not a bad plan.
Yeah, cause I've got a hundred and fifty followers.
Followers? I don't see why I'm putting it in the paper too, okay?
So, do we get, do we set a debt, you know, an end date? So what, first of May or first, first of April?
Usually by the first of May.
First of May?
Or now, if we get some good rains.
Now till first of May?
Yeah.
Set your garbage can in the gutter instead of, or drive under your sidewalk for driveway?
Okay.
All right, so now we got D, right?
Yes.
I did some calling today, uh, to Beersford, um, they have already put their chip seal out to bid. Um, so we kinda lost out peg teaming it with them, but I also called Hay Warden, um, to see if we could get kind of in the same timeline as them. And they are putting it out either today or tomorrow, and I don't know when they're opening. But back to Beersford, Beersford's opening on March nineteenth. And Union County is opening on March ninth, so that's why we kinda needed to get this in there tonight. So we get out, same timeline and hopefully get a better deal. Being along the, and ours won't be due until after two of these have been opened, so they'll know what they've got the contract and hopefully we'll get a better, a better bid since they'll be in the area. And as far as changes of the contract, it's basically dates, right?
That is correct.
So, I think we put no sooner than June fifteenth and completed by September first.
And the opening date is April eighteenth?
April second.
Second, second.
April second. April second.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen, yes.
Okay, well, we, at this time, we need a motion to open bids April second. So I would make the motion that we open Seal Coat bids April second, two thousand eighteen at six thirty P M.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to open the bids April second, two thousand eighteen at six thirty, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. Okay, city employee updates, Dale, you got anything on water?
Nothing on water, wastewater.
Okay.
Anything else? You said nothing on those two things.
Um, well, we were gonna, I've been asked to go up to the South Lincoln Real Water Annual Meeting, and I was thinking about maybe riding along with the girls, so are you gonna go, Pat?
Yeah, I will go.
So I might just ride along with them guys, see what that's all about.
That's this one September twelfth through the fourteenth?
No, that's March twenty-third.
Every year, so...
Oh, sorry.
Every year, South Lincoln does an annual meeting.
We've actually hosted it here once or twice, haven't we?
I don't know.
Yeah, we had it here once, I know.
And basically what happens is, um, the manager of South Lincoln Real Water talks about any major repairs or any new things that they're doing or anything that happened in the previous year or in the future years that we should be aware of, um, in a certain month.
Rules, rules and regulations to get through it and that too, and that kind of thing.
Hope anyone would like to come, it's a Friday, hope anyone else would like to come.
They want.
They do.
And bloodshed officer, board director?
Okay. And other than that, I have a water wastewater conference out in the hills, September twelfth through the fourteenth, and I probably need to go to that to keep my continuing education and my certifications up to be legal and active, I guess.
You've done this before, haven't you, Dale?
Yeah, yeah.
Worthwhile, you think?
Uh, I skipped last year, so I think I'd better go this time, cause I need fifteen hours every other year, so I'm not...
Well, I guess to keep your certification up makes it worthwhile, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, a few of those meetings are absolutely horrendous, I don't know. They have some good sweepers too, but, yeah, it's, it's something I need to go to, okay.
Okay.
So Lonnie, do you need hours to redo your certification too?
Yeah, me too.
Is there an issue with being, being able to, can we get along without, either with, with both, without both of those guys?
Well, I was gonna ask Rankin if he'd be willing to do the wastewater facility for us, cause he used to work there, so.
Just, he'd just be monitoring is what it would amount to?
Yeah, he'd be doing the same thing I do every day, um, and he's got the same certification, so he's, you know, qualified to do it.
Okay.
In the adequate state anyway.
Okay, so we would need a motion to approve sending Dale and Lonnie to the conference.
I'll motion to approve sending Dale and Lonnie to the conference.
I'll second.
Okay. You have a motion and a second, is any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carried. As in the deadly. Okay. Employee updates. Employee updates. What do you see?
Okay.
You're on.
First, monthly stats, we were actually pretty busy in February, um, especially one week, we had three different violent crimes. We had to go deal, or I had to run over to Beersford one night, uh, I don't know if you guys read about it, but a guy. The troopers found a car on the interstate that was abandoned, it was stolen. And they towed it to Carlson's and the guy, I don't know, must've had a release in the trunk, he got out of the trunk, Carlson saw him. And then he ran away, they found him about six hours later in McDonald's. And when Officer Fallberg went to arrest him, he punched him in the face, uh, punched two Burger King employees. And then tried to steal two different cop cars throughout the night, so. So I, and it was about the weather that was here, so you know, I went as quickly but safely as I could over there. Um, got over there along with three other deputies and two highway patrolmen. And made sure when I, the, uh, highway patrol actually found him and, uh, well, as he was trying to steal his car. And he deployed a taser on him and I made sure when I heard him ran over there, I took the extra four seconds to lock and roll up my windows. Cause I didn't want him to try to steal mine. But that ended up being okay, it could've been a lot worse, he apparently has a record for using firearms as well, so. That turned out better than it could've. Had a few, few issues here, um, that went smoothly, um. Like usual, I have on mine, I had twenty-nine calls for service, twenty of them were different calls, so a lot of variety. Mister Claren, his, uh, I think last Friday was his first time on his own, he, uh, we trained him for about eleven shifts. Now, most of his are about six hours because he goes to work in the morning at his request, you know, he's going home at eleven cause he's gotta wake up at six to go to his regular job, so. I guess if he, you know, we, we have it budgeted by hour, so if. You know, like I said, if, if he wants to go home and get a little sleep before, I don't mind that, so. But I think he's, um, he'll kinda lead into the part-time update, I'll talk about him, I guess, more in a second. He had nine different stops and stuff like that, we're still working, we're trying to get the county to get him radar certified. Otherwise, no, training went really well. Nelson, he had thirteen different things, or calls for service slash traffic stop, so. So we're fairly busy for twenty-eight day cycles. Part-time update, uh, still haven't, uh, used either Christie or, uh, Garcia from Madison, which is fine. So the thing is to have him on the roster, so I have more flexibility. Garcia was supposed to come down and he had an issue, a family issue come up, so I ended up just working that instead. Fernando Link has just kind of said, you know, he's, he's trained, we've got a lot of compliments on him. It's nice having someone that's a little bit older, more seasoned, um, very, very polite to the public. He pulled one individual over and the guy, who I know pretty well, you know, texted me and said that he did an excellent job and was very polite, so. As always, when you've never been a cop, there's a lot of things to learn and it'll just be an ongoing learning process. And we don't have the luxury of having him go for six months, but. Austin will be going to the academy, March thirteenth, he starts, I believe it is, whatever, that Monday, eleventh or thirteenth. So he'll start his thirteen weeks then, not typically, not technically a city employee, but just figured I'd give you guys that information. She did a call and said she could get him in and he agreed to go, so. She also, uh, L E T also said that Officer Claren, um, they have a spot for him within the year, but it's gonna be in November. So might have to do a little bit balancing of the budget or, um, cause he'll have maybe a month or so where he'd be there at minimum wage. We sent him, uh, and said, I, I prefer to send him in January, but she, they wanted him to go before his year is up. So they said they have an opening in November, nothing set in stone or anything, but she was just giving me that. That information ahead of time. Next thing, parking on Dakota Street, so kinda where I live now, um, across from Hofer's and Cybert's there. Pat let me know that someone came in and, and, uh, did a complaint, not, I mean, just brought up that it was tough to. Where are my cop cars, cause I park on Fourth Street there, because in front of my house, I'm not allowed to park there. It says no parking this side of the street, all the way from the school down to my corner. I talked to all the neighbors, uh, I finally found out why it's that way. Apparently back in nineteen ninety-six, they had an elderly lady that lived down there, this is from Jean Cybert. And the ambulance got called all the time and the kids would, uh, all park in both sides, so they couldn't get the ambulance in there. So, but, and she used to live at the daycare now. My idea that I brought to the people around there was, uh, um, in the daycare was making, instead of no parking, making it a loading zone from where it says no parking now, down to the end of the daycare. Cause people, it says no parking that side of the street, people park there, you know, there's thirty people a day because they're picking up, uh, their kids in daycare.
Sure.
Unless I wanna, you know, be technical, I guess, and write them all tickets for picking up their kids. I don't think that would be in the, you know, nature of the law, you know, how we, how we, intention of the law. So I, my idea is to make it a loading zone from the one area to the end of the daycare. Then I can park in front of my street, so I'm not blocking the kids, they walk down the alleyway, um, by the daycare and, uh, for lunch. And that's just someone was saying is they can't see the kids when they're coming by my house, cause they'll hit my truck and then, um, after that, they'll hit the thing. And they go pretty fast by there, to be honest with you. So that was just my idea, I asked, I talked to Cybert's, Hofer's, daycare about it, they were all in favor of seeing an issue. I didn't get to talk to Oscar Camp, I talked to Harvey, that's when he was having the parking dispute and he wasn't gonna agree with me and no matter what I told him, if I told him I was giving him nine dollars, but. I don't know, that's just my idea, I tried to talk to people around it, I just think it would solve the problem of people loading and unloading their kids. And then I can park in my side of the street. I'm not really, I, I couldn't care less if I park in fourth, so I'm not saying it really for my own vacation, I couldn't care less where I park, but just since I got the. Because my garage, I went from a five-bedroom house to a two-bedroom, so my garage is full of stuff.
And the complaint was the kids walked down the alley and where he parks is right by the entrance of the alley. And so as a car was coming west on Fourth Street, they might not see anyone in that alley and the kids might dart out.
So if we make that just a loading zone.
Then they can't park there unless they're there for, you know, the five minutes loading and unloading.
Right, so the kids can't park there, but what then gives you the right to park on that street in front of your house? Cause are you saying that the loading zone is only gonna be for part of the block?
Yes, because it's loading, unloading, unloading for daycare specifically.
But then, what, I mean, you're, you're gone, your, your vehicle's gone.
Yeah.
A kid comes in and parks, you can't park there, cause the kids parked there. Cause he, he would have the legal right, or he or she would have the legal right to park there too, correct?
Yeah. As long as he's not in the loading zone, yeah, I mean, he could park in front of my house, I guess, yeah.
Well, at least then. All I'm saying is, and I'm not arguing with you, but I'm just saying, that you can't park there, cause somebody else has parked there. You see what I mean? So if, if a kid parked there, you wouldn't be able to park there.
Yeah, very true, but I think back then too, they didn't have, uh, at least as nice or many spaces that they, that back lot, I know, I don't know, ninety-six, I don't.
So maybe the problem is resolved itself anyway.
I believe so, cause even on the side of the street that can park, there might be one or two trucks there, so.
Well, and in the future, with the new school being.
That's not.
That's a valid point too.
Yep. Yes, I could care, I was just trying to think and find a solution.
So is it all the way down, all the way from the school all the way?
One block.
Oh, it's just that one block?
I believe it's just that one block, yeah.
Fourth and Fifth Street.
So Wanda's, you could, that, Wanda's is the next block south.
Yeah.
You could park there.
I was thinking I could park on that side.
Both sides of the street there.
Yeah.
I think it's a good idea. What color curb is, does it mean it's a loading zone?
I don't know, I'd have to look that up, I guess, I don't know. I was just gonna put two signs, you know, uh, loading zone between signs, I believe, you know, and then they have the two signs there. I think it's green, I think. I think, uh, see others, see other cities, I don't know, I think it is green, but I could be wrong. Okay, well, I, yeah, I appreciate that, I'll look it up, I don't really know. Uh, let's see, do I have anything, oh, okay. And then, uh, D is the police chief's conference, uh, April seventeenth through the nineteenth, gone the last two years, uh, very good. Uh, for networking, very good training, you get training hours for it. Already sent in my, and then sent in Maggie's too, um, it's for police chiefs and they encourage you to bring your, your spouse too. They actually even have activities for the spouse, um, they have a banquet and award ceremony. And then, I think this year they're doing glass blowing for them, they're going down to the glass blowing shops. That should be interesting, so, but need a motion, just, uh, I just brought up, uh, you know, last year I brought my, uh, my personal vehicle. But then when I'm, it's cheaper to take the truck because now I get fifty-something cents a mile. Well, when you go to Deadwood and back, it ends up being like four hundred bucks, so. Here it would just be gas, but I guess about, we're just asking for permission for Maggie to ride along. And my kids, I believe, and to see if my parents, if they weren't or they came with, I'd bring my own personal vehicle, but.
Before we get into any more discussion on that, chief.
Sure.
Regarding, let's just take a step back to letter C. Do we actually need a motion to do this, to, to put these sign up, these signs up for a loading zone?
I'm assuming there's gonna have to be a resolution or something of that nature that will need to be done to designate, so.
So we'll approach that at a later time to make it official, understood, okay, just a question.
Okay, no, that's, thank you, I'm just gonna. I apologize. Anyway, if you guys have any questions on that.
So did you say you get recertification hours at this conference too?
Yes, yes, so, and they have speakers and they have vendors, um, and they say they have award ceremonies. They're having, I think, I believe Jack Ryan's coming back, he talks a lot about, uh, uh, legal issues and. Pretty much not how not to get sued as an officer, but he's a, he's a lawyer now and like the Baltimore where the guy is. Freddie, or I think Freddie Gray or whatever the case was, um, he defended, he defends cops and stuff like that. So he kinda tells you how to stay out of that situation to begin with. He's a really good speaker, so.
Which one of our vehicles would be the most fuel efficient, uh, the car or the pickup?
Well, I think they're pretty similar, um, I mean, I, I couldn't care less which one they take, I guess. Try to keep a few miles off the car, just because we don't know when we're gonna get another one.
Uh, question, Chris.
Yes.
The information you shared with us Thursday night, is that something that's common knowledge?
No, but, um, and I have.
Well, we can go to executive session if you want. We, we just have some questions regarding that.
Sure, yeah.
It's up to you whether you want.
I would like to, yes, so.
At this time, I would move that we go into executive session. Uh, let's see, it would be pursuant to. Personnel, one, South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two dash one.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into the executive session, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? We're in the executive session at seven. Okay, we got everybody back, so seven twenty-three?
We're just showing some interest, I guess.
Okay.
Okay.
So we're gonna. I have a motion to approve, we're gonna table that to April meeting. Okay, city employee updates, golf course, David Larson.
Well, we're, we're getting things, starting to get things back together, my owners all. Have to be put back, the heads have to be adjusted and put back on, so. Imagine I'll get a call pretty soon from Wayne and we'll have to start working on that. Just a lot of odds and ends that are coming, coming together now. Our fertilizer order will be in probably another month or less. I have contacted the, uh, people at B and B Golf Carts. And they will, they'll trade us a couple of ours from eighteen ninety-nine or a couple two thousand eight or two thousand nine models. And be able to stay within our budget of four thousand, so. We'll, we'll get that going. Lonnie and Dale, help me, uh, maybe I recorded last one, we cut down four trees, trimmed about four others. Some stumps to take care of, but otherwise. Tree situations get a little more under control.
Those newer golf carts, are they club carts or, or what are they?
This guy, this guy, uh, pretty much deals in easy go. That's what we'll be trading in, we got two of our oldest ones that we're training in easy goes, I think, probably. The one we got last year was an easy go for me.
And that has worked out well too, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, David. City employee update, Pat. Oh, we have approved the warrants, motion to approve warrants.
I would make a motion to approve the warrants.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carried, employee insurance discussion.
Um, it's been a couple of years since we have looked at, um, insurance plans. I got quotes, we'll start with the health insurance, I got quotes from Mary Lamore here at Alister Insurance. And she quoted, um, Avera and Stanford and the company. And then I went to Jensen Insurance in Beersford and Brad Anderson quoted again Stanford, Avera and Lou Crosswell Shield. And, uh, we narrowed it down, we had a subcommittee meeting and had some employees at that meeting as well. And asked about their insurance needs and the companies they felt and what would be a good fit. And we came up with offering two plans, cause we do have six people on insurance now, we qualified to be able to offer more than one plan. And so we did stick with Stanford. And the employees picked either the simplicity six thousand or the simplicity five thousand. Currently we're at simplicity thirty-five hundred. And, uh, so I gave them this notice, asked them to talk about it amongst their families. And Dale and I are going to take the simplicity six thousand, the rest of the employees will take the simplicity five thousand. But our renewal is May first. So it's going to save, um, the city money going to the plan, going to a different plan. And, um, also for Lonnie and myself, where we have a family member on the plan, it will help us there as well.
Okay, so Dale, you took option one?
Yes, now Dale, my husband Dale. Dale and I will be on, uh, Dale Pearson, Chris, Lonnie, Riley, Dylan will be on option two.
Well, it's always good to have options too to choose from.
It is, I, you know, we're such a, a small group that I am grateful that even at six, we have the ability to have one v one.
I was one of the people on the subcommittee with meeting that, I, I guess I'd like to interject that when we have new employees come on board. We might consider. Something other than the city paying the entire insurance premium. That would be fair, but. I don't know if that would be fair, but it's to be a lot, quite a lot of money over the years, over the, over the months.
Is this by definition a group plan?
Mm-hmm.
I wonder if it is legal then, because typically in a group environment, one employee is treated exactly the same. Now, that being said, none of these individuals are part-time, right?
No.
That is correct.
So, let's say that individual was part-time, then that could possibly be different, but I think we should review that or.
Yeah, hold on, I'll check into that.
Do a little checking now, but.
Something to consider for the future, though.
I have, I have another question, speaking of part-time, since Lance has paid a twelve month contract.
Landon.
Landon, excuse me.
Lance, well.
Looking for Lance.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking for my first gift.
If he would be interested, would he be able to qualify for this group?
We currently pay Landon, he's on a retirement plan, I would have to check and see.
Yeah, but that's mandated by the state, and I, he hasn't ever said anything, but I'm just wondering.
How old is he? Is he twenty-six or five percent?
Yeah, there might be something coming up pretty soon.
Not quite yet.
And I don't think he's probably twenty-six yet, but.
Twenty-three, four.
He's a couple, he's a few years younger than me, so I think he's got a couple of years to go. Yeah.
But we can worry about that when that comes.
Something to think about, though, because it would certainly be incentive for him, I mean, that's, that's a good little thing to visit with him about, too. I don't know, you're, you're more than satisfied with Devin's performance, right?
Yeah, he's doing the job for us.
Okay, so can we get a motion to approve Sanford Health Insurance Plans?
I'll make that motion, to approve Sanford Health Insurance Plans.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve life and accidental death insurance plan.
At the same time, we have the insurance, health insurance, we also signed up the employees for accidental death and dismemberment and life. Fifteen thousand dollar policy on all of the full-time staff. And originally, it was with Assurant, and since then, Assurant has changed hands to be Sun Life Financial, and currently, we, our premium for that is sixty-two fifty a month for the six employees.
I'll make a motion, we approve the life and accidental death insurance policy with Sun Life.
Actually, I'm looking to change to Principal.
I was wondering if that's why this Principal is on the front.
It'll save us some money, and Principal was.
Eighteen dollars a month.
Yeah.
Jensen Insurance.
I'll modify my motion to approve the life and accidental death plan with Principal at forty-four thirty-seven per month for all six employees.
But it's the same amount of coverage.
Yep, fifteen thousand.
Okay. So we have a motion, do we get a, do we have a second?
I'll second Devin's motion to go with the Principal Financial Group for the accidental death and dismemberment and life insurance for full-time employees.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Annual report.
Well, as some of you know, February is a very stressful month in our office, because that's when the annual report has to be done and presented to the council on the third meeting in March. The annual report is very similar to what the auditors do.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And basically, what this is, is it's telling us what happened during twenty seventeen in those. So the, the first page of the annual report is our fund balances, so these are all of our balances, both bank balances and fund balances and bonds and our CDVG loans as of December thirty-first, twenty seventeen.
Are you gonna make the correction that they are all in the bank in Alcestor, not the state bank of Alcestor?
Premier Bank.
They are Premier Bank.
I caught that on my bonds, I did not update the bonds, because the two thousand nine, two thousand eleven, and two thousand sixteen were all created under state bank of Alcestor, but the two thousand seventeen was premier. Page two of the report is, is called a statement of net position, which is basically just a snapshot of what our net worth was as a city at one moment in time, which that moment in time is December thirty-first. So it breaks down our assets, liabilities, and we don't have equity, we have net position Page three of the report is a breakdown of the revenues, the charges, the grants of Page four is called a statement of activities, and this breaks it down both as general government and as our enterprise funds, and our enterprise funds are water, sewer, solid waste, and garbage. It lists the expenses, it lists charging for services, operating grants, and then our business activities from the enterprise funds. Pages five through seven are the balance sheet for the general fund, so it's your general Starting on page eight is the statement of revenues and expenses for our governmental funds, so this is a further breakdown of where did our individual money come from and what expenses we had in each of the categories. And eight and nine travel together, pages eight and nine. We did have a lot of sale of municipal property this year. Page ten and eleven and twelve are the statement of net position for our enterprise funds, so this is the balance sheet for each of those four funds. Pages thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen is our original budget that we approved, and then the next column over is the final budget, which the column is already supplemental that we did, and then the third column is how we actually did, what the actual numbers were Page sixteen is the statement of revenue and expenses of enhanced statement for our general, for our enterprise funds, so it identifies our revenues and our expenses Page seventeen is our long-term debt. So you see our beginning balance, the new debt that was added, which was our lease vehicle, less the debt that was retired, and then our ending balance, and then a breakdown of the different kinds of bonds that we have, whether it's revenue or enterprise revenue. And the area down below, I break it down even further, so you can actually see each individual loan and what the ending balance is in each of those loans. And page eighteen is a statement of cash flow, so it identifies where we used cash and where we brought cash in. And then the last page is what will actually be published in the paper, so all of this information in the eighteen pages will be condensed into this document, which will go One thing that I also included in your packet is, I don't know if you like to keep this stuff on file or not, but this is a depreciation schedule, so it lists all of our major assets. We only put assets on here that are greater than five thousand dollars, so when we purchase assets and they're greater than five thousand, then we will depreciate them, anything under five thousand, we will expense, and I was not originally aware of that until I went through my first audit, and so you'll notice some of the assets in fourteen and fifteen are on here that were smaller amounts. I will not do that anymore, unless we buy an asset that's greater than five thousand. I also indicated in yellow, I highlighted the lines in yellow of all the places that we got rid of an asset, those will eventually come off, I mean, they're already off our books now, but once I give this to the, our auditors, I will delete them, because those assets will no longer be here, or they're already gone, so.
And you're.
No longer.
This just kinda gives you an idea of, yes, what makes up some of those numbers in the annual report, especially when you're looking at the balance sheet items and it talks about building or land or equipment, it gives you an idea what makes those numbers up. And we'll also see where we are on depreciating some of these assets out, a lot of them are on already, fully depreciated, but like some of our buildings and our newer equipment is still yet to depreciate. And we write off ten percent of our books here, that's how we do our depreciation as far as the library goes, so. And the depreciation schedule is broken down by general fund items, water, sewer, solid waste, golf course.
Why do we have the golf course land valued at ten thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars?
I'm assuming that was the land that the clubhouse part was on, but I will ask the auditors, I, I do not know their answer. Any other questions or comments?
Okay, we would have a correction on the annual report, then.
And this first page is not required by the state, that's just, so, but I will change that.
It's actually the very last page, it's an important one, right? Didn't you say that's the one that will be published?
That's the one that will be published, but the state wants my whole annual report as well.
Right, so you will change that before it's submitted to them, but.
But this is actually an in-house document, it's easier for us to see this rather than looking for these numbers on these particular pages, so that's why we do this first page, but I will fix that.
Okay. So, we would need a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen annual report.
I will make the motion to approve the two thousand and seventeen annual report.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Annual report. Motion to hire Kendra Reed for two thousand eighteen summer reading program at a rate of.
I'm going to recommend eight ninety-one, that's what.
Eight ninety-one?
Yes.
Was, was she there last year?
Yes, at eight sixty-five.
Was this position advertised? Does it need to be advertised before we just started?
Dee makes the recommendation for the library, and she made the recommendation for this. It's a summer position, it's, it's just to help with the summer reading program, it's maybe four weeks, and maybe twenty hours, very limited. Before Kendra, we had a gal that had it for three years, and she advertised at the school for that as a student, you know, to get a student, and she asked Kendra, and Kendra wanted to come back, so.
I was just asking, because according to the current, this thing, it wasn't really clear on what needs to be advertised and what doesn't. It made it sound like as long, if it wasn't a regular full-time or part-time position, then it didn't matter, was my interpretation of it? It didn't specify if seasonal work needs to be advertised or not?
The library is kind of its own, because we're fifty, fifty percent of the city and fifty percent of the school, the library is, and. And when Dee makes a recommendation for her staff, or this next one will be for a board member, we usually go with what her recommendation means.
Good question. I make a motion to hire Kendra Reed for the 2000 summer, 2018 summer reading program at the rate of 891 an hour.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Motion to approve Pam Hughes as a city representative on library board for a three-year term effective February 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2020.
I'll make a motion. We approve Pam Hughes as the city representative on the library board, three-year term.
I will second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Board of Equalization meeting. Board of Equalization meeting, March 19th, 2018, at 6:00 P.M. Appeal deadline is March 15th of 2018.
I went down to El Point last week, and they had a meeting down there for county and township and city. And I picked up our packets. And so in preparation of our meeting on the 19th, I will split them out by wards. And like we did last year, look through. And the purpose of this meeting will also be if someone feels their real estate taxes are out of line, they can come in and they can express their concern and file a statement that they would like to have their taxes reevaluated. Just because you guys agree or disagree to that does not mean the county will act upon it. But we do by law have to have this meeting. So we'll start regular council meeting. We'll go into Board of Equalization. You'll put on a different hat if we have anyone come. It's also the time for you guys to look through the sheets that I picked up.
Assessment sheets, yeah.
And then we'll adjourn from that. And then if there's any other city business, we'll move on with that.
Okay, that'll be on March 19th at 6:00 P.M. District meeting, Tuesday, March 13th, Harrisburg.
We are in the first district. So I did miss the deadline of February 27th. But I called the municipal league, and Yvonne was like, "No worries, send up your paper." So it's at the barn this year in Harrisburg. It's $15 a person. I love city employees. Wanda would like to go, Dale Pearson, Chris, and myself. And then if any of the council members would like to attend.
I guess I'd like to. It's a Tuesday, right? Yeah, Tuesday.
What happens at this meeting is you'll have a social hour where you can network with other people from the city, other cities. Then they'll have a meal. And then Yvonne Taylor talks about all the legislation that's happened and how that will affect the cities. And then they have door prizes and...
What time is the meeting?
Social starts at 6:00, dinner's at 7:00, meetings at 8:00.
Okay. And we'll need a motion to approve sending a staff to the district meeting at $15 a person. And David Larson wants to go along also.
Is anyone else?
Isn't that your meeting?
Yeah.
I would like to go, but it will not work with my schedule.
Well, I would make the motion. And how many people did you have, Pat, that wanted to go?
Four.
Four, plus David? I would make the motion to send up two, seven people to the district meeting on Tuesday, March 13th.
I would second Lance's motion to approve up to seven people attending that meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
And I have a seven-passenger vehicle.
Okay.
I knew that.
I'm in a backseat in a registration. Do you, any, does anyone else want to go?
That one won over me that day.
Well, I just let it go.
You said the 13th, right? I didn't go there.
Yes.
I would like to go too.
Okay.
Okay. City school election, election date, April 10th, 2018.
The city will not be having an election. We had just the incumbents fill out petitions. The school will be having an election. They had three people fill out petitions for two positions. So the school election will be down here.
Okay. The executive session, is there a need for executive session?
I would like to, yes, to discuss some things that I went through in here in the...
Police manual.
And according to the rule set out in here, it says that anything discussed regarding this needs to be on executive session.
Okay. Would that be under personnel?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, is that what you're doing? Is making said...
Yes, I'm making a motion, yes. Motion to direct to executive session pursuant to South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2-1 personnel.
I will second Melissa's motion concerning executive session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We're in executive session at 8:56. Seven fifty-six, sorry. April 29th, roll-offs across from the auditorium. Fair work.
No updates from the last time, next Wednesday, March 14th. This is our next. And they would like... I'm a Cambridge person.
Yes, that's me.
It's March 14th.
Where are you meeting?
El Point.
El Point.
Pat, you want to go? Okay, HRC update. Wait, wait one second. Okay, mayor. Prior to our March 19th meeting, would we be able to get a list of any individuals that do have appeals?
I will have them in our office on Friday. And so I can send them out with the notice of meeting.
Oh, there you go.
The books are here.
Okay, so we could get...
I have one book.
Okay. Are we gonna, oh, you're gonna split it?
Yes.
Into pieces.
I'll break it out into wards.
When would we maybe be able to get that? So we could actually take a look at it.
You can look at it any time you want to. It's here.
That would be handy, maybe ahead of time. Yeah. Okay, HRC update. We had a meeting last week.
Yep.
And we're gonna have Short Hartman mow the Beck Drive properties. Nate is gonna take care of the fourplex mowing. We've got it set up. We're gonna get it set up for the irrigation system to be turned back on, probably plan for the fertilization of the land at the fourplex. And pretty much if we have maintenance to do, we're gonna have Philane Finkbaum take care of that first.
Honeydew construction.
Okay, so that's about it, that's all we got there. Community, Alcestric community building update.
Wait, just one second. Again, let's go back to that one thing that was brought up. And I don't know whether you've had a chance to talk to anybody from the city moving the sign that's out on our...
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
And will that probably be moved in?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Dale and Bonnie, when they can get in there to get it.
Right.
They're gonna take it and put it in the basement. And I'm gonna send a note. When it's there, I'm gonna send an email to you, to Jared, and to Nate. And you guys can put it wherever you want.
Wherever you want.
Because I was done.
Yeah.
The damn signs.
Plan is then that sign will actually end up at Beck Drive.
Yeah.
That's what, that's what has been brought to the committee by the...
Those signs sat in the basement for over a year without anything being done with them. And when I joined the committee, that's one of the first things I got done was put the signs up. And they don't like where they are. So wherever they want to put them, I don't care. They can hang them from a tree.
That works for me.
Anyway, community building update.
There, the parcel of land has been agreed upon for the new site of the community center. It is the vacant lot between Southeastern and the football field across the street from Dean Johnson's house. An agreement was reached with Southeastern to purchase. There's four acres there. And also Southeastern is getting rid of the manager's house. The pole yard will be relocated to behind the current Southeastern building. And I'm not sure of the timeframe of that. I believe it will start this year. I did send out a purchase agreement that identifies the terms of the four-acre purchase. This does not include the manager's house that's being purchased by the investor board. There, this agreement started in January, so the date is January. But there are a couple of changes that will be made to this agreement. So what I am asking is if you could do a motion to approve the mayor and myself to sign this agreement when all of the changes are done, one of them being the date, updating it to a March date. And the other item that will be modified is to indicate when the pole yard will be off the grounds. And also while the pole yard is still on the grounds, that Southeastern maintain liability insurance, will have liability insurance on it as well, but that Southeastern maintain liability insurance on the property until the pole ground, pole building is completely, or pole yard is completely moved off. The funds for this are not coming out of city money at this point. The funds for this are coming from private donations from the St. Paul's Foundation.
Who wrote the purchase agreement?
I'm sorry?
Who wrote the purchase agreement?
Southeastern. They're legal.
So the $223, $2,000 is available without the city?
Yes.
Saint Albans? That's a good deal. So you need a motion to okay Mayor Glass and Pat to sign the purchase agreement. With, with the changes, right? With the changes.
So then did our lawyer put this over?
Yes, he did. And two of the changes were at his recommendation to put in the liability, that they covered, hold their own liability insurance until the pole yard is completely removed, and that we put some sort of a, know some sort of a deadline when the pole yard is going to be off the grounds.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve Mayor Glass and Finance Officer Pat Jurens to sign the purchase agreement when it is finalized.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Updating volunteer roster for workmen's comp. Do they have anything on that?
I have no changes at all.
Okay. Executive session, anybody need the executive session? No? Okay. Tough one. Can we get a motion to adjourn? Yes, sir, you may. I'll make that motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Hope not? Thank you. We're adjourned.
How do you spell your first name?
M-E-L-I-S.
835.